Welcome one, welcome all to the joint meeting of the City Council and the Virginia Beach School Board. We have a couple nuances today. First of all, we are streaming live this session to get it out to the public what we're going to be deliberating and talking about. And the other thing is, we also, starting a little earlier today, you know, so this way we get through that we're not backed into our next obligation. So we're actually going to have some considerable time for discussion among ourselves, you know, for understanding clarity and to bring forward, you know, any ideas, recommendations, and just build better bridges between our two bodies, okay? So at this point, Mr. Leahy and Superintendent, are we ready to rock and roll?
Yes, we are. Mayor Dyer and members of council and Chairwoman Anderson and members of the school board and Dr. Spence. Today, we have our two chief financial officers from the city staff and from the school board to make a presentation today. And we'll start off with Farrell Hansacker, Chief Financial Officer for the school system.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
I'm going to start off and give you a brief overview and history of the revenue sharing formula, and then we'll move into the specifics of what's changed and what we're recommending. The General Assembly gives the authority solely to the City Council in terms of levying any taxes. The City Council can appropriate funding to the schools either in lump sum or in by major category. The school board has the sole discretion in the oversight of the operating budget, including how funding is spent. And any funding remaining at the end of close of the fiscal year will revert to the city. The first funding formula between the city and the schools began in 1998. That formula shared seven of the largest revenue streams between the city and the schools. At that time, approximately 53% of those revenue streams went to the schools and the other 47% went to the city. From their allocation, the schools fund their debt service and also any pay go that they want to transfer to the CIP projects. The policy required the schools to make formal written requests if they desired funding in excess of what was included in the revenue sharing formula. The original formula remained in place through 2012 and was then eliminated. In 2014, a new funding formula was established. The new formula uses the state standards of quality, SOQs, as a benchmark for calculating the revenue between the schools and the city. The formula requires the city to provide 100% of the state required matching funds. In addition to the required local match, the city also provides 33...34.11% of non-dedicated local tax revenue as a discretionary local match. And any revenue dedicated specifically for school purposes would also be added to this non-discretionary amount. And an example of that would be the dollar and 25 cents for full day kindergarten that was added a few years ago. Now that we've provided a historical context of the two revenue sharing formulas that have been in place for 22 of the last 23 years, let's look at the formulas that we've produced in terms of revenue to the schools' operating fund. From 2001 through 2020, the city's annual contribution to the schools grew by approximately $200 million. As this graph illustrates, the gap in city funding for the schools' operating fund as compared to the state continues to widen. As you can see on the left side of the graph, the last time the state provided the majority of school funds was back in 2001. In addition, the schools for the last several years have, as a part of our budget request, noted and showed that the funding for the state has been lacking. In addition to that, as a side note, 2009 was the last time the state provided any funding for construction projects. That 110 million of that state lottery funds was in 2009. That's the last time we received any funds for that source of funds. And there was an additional 4 million in 2010. That was the last year we got any state construction money. So in addition to the widening gap in the operating budget that we have between the state and the local, $14 million just went away for state for construction projects. Delving a little deeper into the city's contribution to schools, this graph shows the annual change in funding to the schools through the revenue sharing formula. As you can see from this graph, funding to the schools from the city declined for three consecutive years during the recession. However, it's increased each of the past eight years in a row. While the variables and the methodology for calculating the formula were described in an earlier slide, this slide shows the actual calculation of the formula for the current 2020 year. In FY 2020, the city provided nearly $448 million in local funding to the schools. The current funding formula expired in June 30th of 2018. In preparation for the 2020 budget process, the city manager wrote a letter to the city council recommending a one-year extension of the existing formula. The reason for requesting this extension was twofold. First, in 2020, the second year was the second year of the biennium, which removes some of the uncertainty around the standards of quality. Second, there was an election coming up later that fall, and it was believed that a decision around a new funding formula should be made by a new council. Or that council at the time. On August the 13th, David Bradley provided the council with a briefing that outlined the process that we plan to undertake to develop a joint recommendation to the city council and the school board regarding the funding formula as we moved forward in FY 2021 budget process. As you can see, the slide shows some of the guiding principles that we utilize to develop our joint recommendation. We want a formula that will be fair and equitable. We want something that is more easily understood. We want to ensure that information is available earlier in the budget process, which will aid both the city schools in developing of their budgets. We want a formula that would aid both the city schools in long-term planning. And as partners in the economic vitality of the city, we want a formula that will allow both the city and schools to share in the economic growth. I'll turn it over to Jonathan now.
All right. Thanks, Farrell. So now that Farrell's provided you with a little bit of the background, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the recommendations moving forward and some of the alternatives that we looked at. But the first thing I want to do is kind of take you back to the current methodology and talk to you about the SOQ and the required local match. As you can see from this graph, there's quite a bit of volatility in that SOQ required match. And this volatility is created by a number of things. Every biennium, the state engages in a process known as re-benchmarking. And what they're doing is they're resetting the baseline cost for providing education here in Virginia. The other thing that they're doing is they're also resetting the composite index or the local ability to pay. So when they reset and recalculate those figures, that creates this volatility you're seeing on these graphs. And that creates some of the complication that we have in terms of planning for the coming fiscal year. This information is not provided to us until the December timeframe at the earliest, when the governor presents his or her budget. And then after that, the state can make, the state legislature, as they grapple with the budget process, can continue to make changes to this figure. So we do not get this information until very late in the budget process. And as I said, it creates complications in terms of planning and budgeting. So the process for the new formula and our joint staff recommendation, the first thing we did was, we did some environmental scanning. We wanted to look and see are other jurisdictions around the state utilizing funding formulas or revenue sharing formulas. And we found that in fact, a number are, some of our local neighbors, Norfolk, Chesapeake, utilized revenue sharing formulas. And then we met jointly, city and school staff, and we looked at a number of different alternatives. And I'll just kind of walk you through the three major alternatives that we explored. So the first alternative that we looked at was maintaining the current formula. We felt like it was important to at least look at this and put this through that set of criteria that Farrell mentioned. And when we did that, we found that yes, the current revenue sharing formula allows us to share in the growth in the tax base between the city and schools. But due to those changes in the SOQ, making that long-term planning so difficult with the continual changes every biennium of the local composite index and the required match, long-term planning just is difficult using that formula. That information, again, as I mentioned earlier, that SOQ information is not available early in the process. And as the graph showed, there's that volatility with the SOQ. And frankly, that, the SOQ is not a widely recognized or understood concept, which makes it difficult to explain to the public when you're trying to talk about the revenue sharing formula. Then we looked at an alternative that would adjust for changes in enrollment or population. So when we did that, we saw a number of positives. Again, this type of a revenue sharing formula would allow us to share in the city's economic growth. We felt that it would be better able to facilitate long-term planning. We believe that it would provide information earlier in the process. But we also note that the state in their funding of schools already adjusts for changes in enrollment. And there's not always a direct correlation in enrollment and population changes and the cost of providing the services that we provide as a city or as a school district. So now we get to the third alternative, and this is actually our joint staff recommendation to you. So let's talk about how we got to this particular alternative in this recommendation. We're going to utilize the exact same revenues that the current revenue sharing formula utilizes. And the two things we wanted to try to do was get rid of some of the uncertainty around the SOQ and the lack of timeliness of the SOQ. So we redirected a number of the existing dedications and moved those back into the base of the formula revenues. But we wanted to maintain three dedications. The first is a two and a half cent dedication of real estate tax to stormwater. City council, you will recall that in the FY 20 budget, you placed that in a lockbox. So we wanted to make sure that we maintained that dedication. And then there's two dedications that flow through the general fund to the CIP. That's for the outdoor initiative and the EDIP. Since the general fund is simply a conduit for those dedications, we felt that we should maintain those dedications and allow those to continue to flow to the CIP. So once you calculate that local, total local tax revenue, you net out those dedications. We wanted to use the fiscal year 20 as a benchmark, and we said, okay, what percentage of those revenues would we need to bring us back to that $447.5 million figure that Farrell showed you a moment ago? And we came to 46.75%. So that is our recommendation that moving forward, we share 46.75% of those revenues minus those dedications with the schools. Just to be completely clear, there are a number of other revenues that are excluded. They've been excluded from previous formulas. They remain excluded. These are real estate taxes that go to TIFs or special service districts. There is also dedications to recreation centers through the Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund as well as the ARP. So those remain out of the formula revenues. So this slide shows you a side-by-side comparison of the current revenue sharing formula and the calculation that led us to that $447.5 million. That's in that blue box. And then in the red box, you will see the proposed revenue sharing formula. Again, you'll notice the bottom line is the same, but we have removed the SOQ required local match as a component of the formula calculation. And we have also redirected a number of those dedications back into the base of the revenue sharing formula to give us the 46.75%. Moving forward, we know that both boards will want to obtain public input on this recommendation. So we would ask that at a future meeting that you engage in that process. We would ask that you vote on a revised revenue sharing policy that was provided to you in your Friday packet. That policy would implement this particular formula. We would request that the revenue sharing formula policy be extended through June 30th of 2024. And similar to the current policy, we would ask that there be a provision in the policy that states that if the schools would like to request additional funding above that, which is allocated through the formula, that they make a formal request to the city council. And Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions, please? Discussion?
Well, first, I'm glad you acknowledged the fact that the council only got this on Friday, and the council as a body never discussed this particular change. So I don't want to talk about the specifics because we haven't had a chance to talk together as a body, and we'll hear from the public. I personally don't believe in funding formulas. No one knows if that's true. I've expressed that many times. I think that in bad times, you underfund, and in good times, you overfund. I don't know many people who have a funding formula with their kids at home. They have an annual budget. They compete requirements. And we've got to be competing requirements. And it may well be that educations may have some higher priorities for construction than some of the schools, some of the projects that we have. It also doesn't reflect that it's more important for someone to go home to a dry home than a modernized school. So flooding is a huge priority. And what this doesn't address is the allocation of the city's debt capacity. You know, and that is a critical issue to everyone at this table because we have competing issues. A billion dollars for schools. I don't think it's a funding crisis, or hopefully we would have taken care of it earlier, and the schools would have spent some of their money differently. But we have a huge flooding mitigation bill. The taxpayers can't pay both those bills. So I think a funding formula, if that's the route that the majority takes, that doesn't also address allocation of debt service is just creating the same political tension on the CIP front that this is designed to avoid on the operating budget side. This is expedient for us. It's not expedient for the public because what it means is no one's scrubbing the requirements. No one's competing smaller classrooms against a rec center in Centerville. No one's competing tax incentives that we give away versus we didn't give them away. How much money would we get? Because that revenue is going to be excluded. When you look forward to economic growth going forward, they're talking next year, maybe 1.83% GDP growth because of trade issues. So as we look at slower economic growth, we have to really understand not how this formula works in 2021, but show me over the five-year forecast that we're going to get in November, how this will play out in terms of resource allocation. And subject that to sensitivity analysis. Economic goes down 1%, goes up 1%. Are we going to be happy with the results? This is what gets us in trouble with Medicare, Social Security, because you build an entitlement, you build a formula, and who thinks that anyone's going to, you know, that's going to tie our hands on our discretion. What I think the public wants us to do is what we've been elected to do. You tell us what your requirement is, unconstrained by resources because you don't provide resources, you can't tax for resources. And our job is to what? Like at the family table, you know, we've got health insurance to pay, we've got a lot of bills to pay. Where do we want to accept risk? Want to accept risk with school modernization? Maybe we do. Do we want to accept risk on city side? Probably we should because what's more important than our kids? But that doesn't mean that we need to keep building, you know, old donation centers, buildings around trees. No, it means we have to be much smarter about our capital allocation. And I think there should be some discussion about how much of our available debt capacity can the schools think about receiving unless they want to go to referendum and people see the cost. But even then, we are leveraging the city's credit rating. So even referendum debt has to be thought of from an allocation point of view. And I know everyone's talking about the campaign trail, the need to modernize school, the need for New First Colonial. You start adding that all up, you can't fit that into the five-year CIP program. So what this says is that we can maintain what we have. And if you're telling us that's what you want, because the resistance to tax increases is going to be high. You have people are getting what? 1.6% Social Security. That's a large part of our population who live on that. And their Medicaid Part B is going to consume much of that increase. It's a large part of our population. And look at the growing people on our tax exemption list, that they're not paying taxes because they don't make enough money to pay. That's not a good sign, but it also takes away from revenues that are available. So I think that when we do this, if I was in your shoes, you're locking yourself down to the status quo. If you are comfortable with that, and you think this is where you want to be, then you should, you should sign on this tomorrow. It's like getting a fixed return annuity and saying, I'm willing to accept that independent of future market conditions. Or do you want to be able to be in a position without asking you having to ask for tax increases? Why? Why should you have to do that? Your job is to tell us what your requirement is. You shouldn't be having to tell us to pay tax, to raise taxes. We should be looking at the whole bill and telling the public whether or not the risk that the private sector has to take by having less income is less important than the public good they will receive. That's not your job. That's council's job. We were elected to do this. To me, this is like delegating our ability away to take risks on the public's part. And you delegate away the right to tell us what your requirement is unless you ask us for tax increases. I just don't think that's a good way of governing. I agree, it takes the friction out. It does do that, but that friction comes, removing friction comes at a cost. It locks you in to your current performance code to the extent that it's tied to revenues, and it basically leaves you empty-handed when it comes to modernizing the school system that you say you need money for. So maybe the best compromise in this is, but I do think unless this talks to the CIP piece of where we're going at some point, and I would read this to mean that you shouldn't be counting on getting $5 million from the TIF fund from Sandbridge. Because in this agreement, that would be eliminated. It says right here, TIFs is excluded. I mean, I read that right in here.
Sure. So that, that is actually declared surplus at the end of the fiscal year, and it becomes general fund fund balance, and then we split that at the end of the fiscal year. So that's technically surplus out of the TIF. It's not TIF revenue. So that would be maintained.
It's surplus to the extent that the people who pay the extra TIF money are not getting the services in their district because we're declaring it surplus. And I think that's the point I'm trying to make. There are people, there's no surplus coming from the town center. I can already tell you that. The only surplus is coming from a sand bridge. And I can tell you, we're hearing from those residents that surplus exists only because we are under-meeting the requirements for which the TIF is created. And that's what I'm mentioning here when you talk about requirements. There's only a surplus if the requirement is fully met. I'm just telling you, that's a contingent revenue. That's a discussion. So to say that, I think, is being less than fully disclosing how we are deriving that surplus is underserving the people who pay it. So that's another discussion for another venue. But I think there's more than one view. But I do think that you have to think long and hard about the opportunity cost for not competing requirements on an annual basis. And does that serve the public? Or does it just make our job easier for us, but also doesn't allow us to state what the kids really need and what the public needs? And I think this document does not do that.
Okay, thank you. And you know, just to remember, this is an initial conversation. You know, Mr. Moss is right, we just got the information. But this is the opportunity to express our individual views and collective views going forward. Because once again, we are all, everybody at this table is facing challenging times. Yes, we have a $3.7 billion-plus obligation. We're looking towards stormwater and $3 billion for school modernization. So the thing is, by having the dialogue now and then, you know, realizing the challenges that we got forward, you know, to come up with solutions. And that's why we're allowing more time for dialogue today than we've had previously. Rosemary?
I think it's, I suppose, turn this on. I think it's good that we're simplifying the formula because there were so many added components to it. But I did want to question, to facilitate the long-term planning, how is that going to help us with our CIP needs for schools?
So the issue there is that that SOQ and the constant changing of the required local match, it just makes it really difficult for us when every other year, they're re-benchmarking. Even if we have a really good grasp on revenues at the city level, and we have, you know, a nice even trend line, that SOQ required local match, if it were to go up by a significant percentage, that actually meant, under the old formula, that the city was required to pay more in terms of their allocation to schools. If it, if the revenue, the general fund revenue was going, was growing by less, or the SOQ, excuse me, was growing by less than the general fund revenues, the schools received less. So that SOQ component really created some challenges with the re-benchmarking as well as the changing of the local composite index because we don't have control, it's not predictable, and it just made it very difficult for us to plan.
And how's that helping us with CIP?
I'm sorry?
How's that helping us with CIP?
So in terms of the CIP, again, you know, there's that balancing act there. They are, the schools would maintain the responsibility under this formula to utilize those formula revenues to allocate any pay go or to pay for any debt service that they would owe underneath, due to any bonds or anything that they've issued. So again, it gives them more predictability and gets rid of that SOQ component.
Thank you.
And Farrell, if you wanted to.
Okay, anybody else?
I just have one, one simple question. If the school board presents an estimate of needs, what's the chance that we're going to get what we're asking for? That's my concern. I'll just leave that there. You don't have to answer it.
Okay.
Right. John?
I would assume then that this agreement then would sever any relationship of parity about general pay increases or any of that nature or benefits, that we'd be severing that relationship because now people both have their same camps. And if we're able to find efficiencies and do things within our budget and have more dollars for benefits or salary increases, that we're now saying that, here's your money, you got it, do what you can with it. Here's our money, we do what we can. And if we can do different things, then we're not expecting we're breaking all bounds about parity because, that we've tried to maintain because now we've got a funding formula and everybody has, and they have total discretion how to spend their money. So they'd have, is that what this says?
So, Mr. Moss, informally, I know that in the past, there has been agreement on pay raises. But to my knowledge, there's nothing formal that has required that both the school board and the city provide equal pay raises. Again, that's something that's been worked through informally, but to my knowledge, there's nothing formal. But I couldn't answer that question. I would ask superintendent or the city manager when they propose their budget would respond to that question.
Well, I guess my point is, if you read this, this was a policy. Nothing in this policy requires pay or benefit parity between the two parties of the agreement.
That's true. Nor does the current policy.
Yes, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what that is. Because, you know, that's just making clear the public watching and listening and employees listening. I just want, this is what, because you may recall, this body, the council, when the school board couldn't meet their thing without raising taxes, we gave them additional funding. I think it was $750,000 if my memory serves me correctly, but it might have been more. And so I'm just saying, setting the expectation, if there's a formula, you live, expression, you live and die by the formula. You shouldn't be expecting to come back and ask us for more money without a tax increase for out-of-cycle money, which is what we have done in the past. But I think if we're setting this new policy, we're setting these percentages, and we give you the money lump sum now, we've done that the last time we gave it lump sum, and we do that, then I would expect the people to live within their means. But to your estimate of need, no one ever gets what they think they need, because that's a personal decision, that's a collective decision. What we have to decide is, what can the public afford? I don't think anyone around here says we think government should grow at the expense of lowering the personal living standards of households. And like all households, you have to do what? You have to take risk and you have to allocate resources and you have to set priorities. And everybody can't just even always get what they want. But often sometimes, the money may not be there for everything even that you need. And then you have to say is, is protecting people's life and property for flooding more important than modernizing schools? That's a public debate. That's a public discussion. And so the answer to the question, no. The city doesn't get everything it wants either. No one can guarantee you that you're going to get what you asked for. It's just not possible. But what you can be asked for, will the process by which we debate the public requirements for funding and making the decision between whether we're going to take more wealth and income from people than we have taken, and that we can justify that taking because we believe the public benefit is worth it? That's a public debate. And that's why we run for office, to make difficult choices. And the easiest choice is always what? To raise people's taxes. That's not the choice we should always make.
Beverly?
I, I do believe though, that it was explained to us that we still would have the exact same formal request as we've had in the past. If we have to ask for more money, we have to formally ask as we've done in the past. That has not changed. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, so what you're stating is that if we say we want to give a 5% to our, our employees and this, you know, and we need more money for that, that we should just do a budget of need and ask city council for it? That doesn't mean we're going to get it, but we would ask for it. And so what, where we are now is, we know we have a certain amount of money to live in, to live with. And if we have to add more, more money to the budget because we want to add more, say for a pay raise, we would still have to follow the same procedure that we did in the past, which would be to ask formally from city council, for city council to provide that money through a tax increase. It doesn't mean that city council has to give the tax increase or has to award a tax increase. City council may be able to come up with funding that's not part of a tax increase. That's a possibility as well. But, you know, city council would have to make that choice as to if they want to award that money toward, to city, to school board or not.
Let me look that through a different lens, from the people who pay the bill versus, and the people who earn the money versus us who spend it and confiscate it. So you're at that home, and your real estate taxes go up, your real estate appreciation goes up 4%. And you're that senior citizen who still makes more than the minimum. They can't get a tax break. So their, their income goes up 1.6%. Then we say, oh my gosh, the trash fee just went up. We've got to raise their trash fee $5 a month. Oh, by the way, the sewer bill at HRSD hits you with the... So when they look at the end, their net income went down. So they didn't get this, they're not getting the same disposable income they got last year. But we, by this process, everybody's being held harmless from the performance of the economy. Should it underperform and people's incomes fall, we're guaranteed income. Now, clearly, the council could lower tax rates, and you'd get less money, but yet we have to, some things we have to pay independent of that based on this formula. There is a certain level that we're going to pay, no matter what. I'm just saying is, you've got to look at, if I was a household, like I said this many times, I'd like a funding formula. A funding formula that protected me against increases that I couldn't afford from us. But they don't have one. So I, I think you, every, every guarantee comes at a cost. Every guarantee comes at a cost. And the cost is, the risk exposure is not to us. The risk exposure of this agreement is to the public, who, once we sign it, has to honor it. And we will honor it once it's signed. But there is a risk, and there is a cost, and it isn't borne by the people who sign this document.
Okay, Dan Edwards, and then Aaron.
I, I would suggest if families could have a funding formula, if, if it was a percentage of whatever is available. And if the available funds go down, like they did 10 years ago, then we reap the, the impact of that. Stability for the school board and having a reasonable grasp of their funding is, is important. And not knowing until May, what portion of that 400 and some million dollars we're going to get, makes it virtually impossible for the school board and the staff, which is already starting the process of assembling our FY21 budget. We've got 13,000 employees and an incredibly important mission to execute. We, if we had to wait till May to find out what portion of that 400 and some million dollars we were going to get, we wouldn't even, you know, we wouldn't even be able to meet the potential furlough, furlough deadlines and stuff that are imposed on us by, by the state. The formula, which provides us stability and provides virtually every other school division of our size around the Commonwealth, that stability, since the, you know, school board does not have appropriating authority, which most school divisions around the country do. That's why having some, that's why the formula is so important. This change, proposed change, the school board is potentially sacrificing the ability to, to have that commitment from the city to match the SOQ adjustments. If all of a sudden the Commonwealth, through whatever means, whether it be a tax hike at the state level or, or whatever, ends up with a large pay raise coming down to the school division, there is certainly a, a strong potential under the proposed change that we wouldn't, we, you know, the local match would not be available to us. We're giving something up. However, it's a good trade-off because we're locking into a stability, from a, from a stability standpoint and from a timing standpoint, so that the city can assemble its very important budget, which you're already working on at the staff level and will be working on. I, I am very appreciative of the fact that we've had a formula. It has worked well, not only between the two bodies, but I think in terms of providing quality of education for the children of the city. And I hope that both bodies will consider the proposed formula favorably in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Yeah, so we, we talk about risk. And I believe that the greater risk is in creating a new generation that's, that's underprepared and unprepared to contribute to society. And what we're talking about is potentially creating a generation that's unprepared and underprepared to contribute to our local economy. So that's something to keep in mind. So when we're talking about costs, I think it's important that we view it as an investment. This is an investment into home-growing our future workforce that can contribute to our local economy and to our region. So while we, both bodies will sit and discuss a formula to go together, go together and go forward together, we'll have all kind of debates. It's important that we keep in mind that we have a moral responsibility to prepare our children. It's not just about balancing the budget, end of the day, which is very, very important, and I agree. But at the same time, if we have to encourage that, to ensure that our future generations can better take our city to the future, that's what, that is what we must do. To figure out the way to go forward and a plan, that's something we can debate. But let's not leave here thinking that we are taking risk only to our economic budgets as to opposed to taking a risk, a greater risk to our children and to our future. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I get Sabrina, and then back to John.
You forgot Michael.
Oh, Michael, okay. Okay.
I just want to say very quickly, just want to make sure that this is not, and, and people understand, understand that this is not a competition with making sure flooding is taken care of or meeting the needs of the students. It's not either or. I believe we can do both and address both because both are serious needs. And when we look at needs, not once, we're looking at needs. We're looking at infrastructure that needs to be repaired. We're looking at inequality within our school systems that needs to be addressed. Those are apparent and important needs that need to be addressed. So it's not either or. We can do both. I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We've been elected to make those tough decisions, and I think we can do that. So I think we should keep that in mind.
Okay, if we can go with Michael, and then John, and then Vicki.
Well, thank, well, thank you. As I had a chance to listen to a few of the conversations, I couldn't help but feel a sense of discomfort when these complicated budget discussions continue to be compared to our household budgets. Because in fact, these budgets cannot be compared to our household budgets. While some of the concepts remain the same, and often they do, the fact remains that the budgets of the people's business are complex and they're multifaceted. And the weight of them, because of the collective impact it has on our communities, is even stronger. So I think we should be careful as we have these discussions about oversimplifying it and at times misleading the public by making these unfair comparisons to our household budgets. Because in fact, there are a variety of different revenue sources, there are complex expenditures related to these, and there are many, many thousands of people and hundreds of thousands of people who are impacted by the business that these budgets represent. So I want to first express my discomfort with that level of conversation. But if we are going to make a comparison about household budgets, let me tell you what happens in households. People make things work. People stretch to give opportunity to their young people. I know that's what my parents did. And so while I admit that I'm new to the mechanics of formulating a budget into revenue-sharing formulas, I know the simple concept about making room for opportunity for young people is one that I take very seriously. I'm the beneficiary of the fact that my parents did that for me. And I hope that we can all continue to, to place that forward as we have these discussions. So I just wanted to express my perspective on that piece of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, John, then, then Victoria.
Well, I'm a product of the new system. Under Dr. Brickell, we never had a funding formula. We had outstanding achievement. We had standard cookie cutter-built schools. So everybody, there was no inequality between how the schools looked or how they functioned. They were economically constructed. They produced very successful people. And we were able to make those decisions without a funding formula. So think of how long we were a city before we had a funding formula. Now, many of you may not have lived here as long as I have, but I know Barbara and Louis and others have. And what got us to a funding formula was because the school system was asking for their true requirement, the one that really dealt with the needs of the kids. And we had people out protesting in the parking lot, on the sidewalks. I remember when people might wear the placards, I'm sure many of you people may remember that. And so we came to a funding formula among the people, because they wanted to eliminate the friction that exists when you could not meet the needs of everyone. And you could not find the appropriate political trades at the time without increasing taxes, which no one wanted to do. So the compromise then was, for those who know their history, was to create a funding formula. And to my point, and I have often said, I think funding formulas short-changes the students. Because we are not really seeing what the real requirement is. And what is the performance that we believe that we would achieve in terms of output if we fully funded it? There's no requirement debate in this. This is just a current services discussion. No one's talked about the requirements or expectations or performance metrics if we do this versus an alternative of requirements budget. And I take exception to say that households' budgets are simplistic and were more complicated. Because guess what? Those households pay almost all the taxes that we collect. They're the ones who on less than $45,000 a year on school and produce lunch, have to pay for their childcare, try to make a car payment, try not to be one of those 25% of their people who get their water cut off because they can't pay their bill. You tell me how complicated their life is? Much more complicated, much more challenging, much more difficult. The consequences. I had a kid who couldn't go play sports because his parents couldn't afford the chance that he could what? He might break a bone or something and didn't have insurance. Or they couldn't cover the deductible. These are real-life people. So to say that we are overly complicated and this is a simplified application, they have a much more difficult job than we do. Much more difficult. Because one, they can't go to their employer and demand more money. We can confiscate income and wealth. They're much more vulnerable to the economy than government, who's much more insulated because of how it taxes fixed assets versus income, because that's what we have. So to, to, to say that we have a, that people don't understand the intricacies and it's oversimplification, I think that's what people say when they want to raise taxes. Because they make it sound like their job is so difficult and it's easier for you to find $25 more a month or $10 more a month than it is for me to cut. I, I don't think, I just don't think that's true. But I think both people have equally tough challenges, is what I would say. Not less or more, but I think they're equal. Equal challenges, because someone is not going to get something that they want, and some people may not get something that they need. You know, we don't have 40% of our school-aged children in schools on free or reduced lunch because they want to be. It's almost 40%. Those are real economic struggles. We aren't sending people home with lunches, dinners on the weekends so they'll have food at home on the weekends because we have this overly prosperous citizens at the bottom of our, those people are struggling. And they're, while they may not have all the revenue flows, I wish they, they probably wish they had those, but dealing with their constrained resources and dealing with all the competitions for those limited resources, I think the consequences are so much more severe and so much more personally felt than the consequence, we don't, than what we personally feel by the choices we make. So I don't think it's oversimplification. And I don't think it's disingenuous to be empathetic either. And I don't think the suggestion, Michael, you ever think that we aren't empathetic. But I do think it's, but to say that our job is, this is more, more complicated than the household budget, and that's an unfair characterization or analogy, I, I just take exception. I respect your view, but I take exception to it.
Okay, thank you. Victoria, and then Beverly.
Well, first, I want to thank city council for letting us be part of this conversation. You could unilaterally make the decision and, and tell us what we're going to have to do. So I appreciate you allowing us to be here and be a part of that conversation. So it's my understanding from this presentation, I just got the information yesterday, so I'm still absorbing everything. But based upon the presentation, kind of some of the behind-the-scenes stuff that's going on, I just want to understand. Its staff has considered basically three options that you presented to us, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Maintain the current formula, do a shared formula, but adjust for enrollment, or do this third alternative that you've recommended? That's kind of what's been discussed behind the scenes, correct?
To be completely clear, there was another two derivatives of the enrollment population formula, but it, all basically the same.
Okay. So every year during our budgeting process, we have speakers come before us, obviously. And every year, we have a number of speakers who request that the school board makes a request to city council to have needs-based budgeting. So, you know, I see advantages from both sides on revenue sharing and on needs-based budgeting. But I would like to know, has staff even discussed that option? That is something that our community has asked us to look into. Is that something that, that staff has discussed?
So, Eric can respond as well. A lot of the staff conversation was at the finance level, but I will say, we had a kind of guiding conversation about that. So I, I agree, there's advantages and disadvantages to both. I've worked in a system where we didn't have a funding formula, and we had to present our budget first to the board and have the board then deliberate and adopt its budget. And then we had to take that budget over to, in that case, the county supervisors. And then we had to have a conversation with them. The problem, which Mr. Edwards alluded to earlier, was that delay in being able to plan. So I'll give you just like one practical example. So everybody's aware of the conversation around teacher shortages. And in fact, the board tonight's going to... And in fact, the board tonight's going to get an overview of some of the challenges that we're having with hiring teachers. So we hire over 600 teachers every year. And one of the ways that we're able to accomplish that is to get an early start. And so we begin releasing allocations to our schools so that they have a sense of, okay, here's how many teacher positions you will have next year based on projected enrollment and projected funding. And so we're going to release those with confidence that we're going to have the funding because we have a revenue-sharing formula in place. And by February, we typically have a good picture of what the state revenue will look like. So because we have those two things in place, we're able to, with confidence, tell schools, start hiring now. And so we begin the hiring process in February. If we did not know what council's decisions were going to be until much later, you know, council doesn't adopt this until May, the final budget request, then we would not be able to release those allocations, which would put us behind the eight ball because we are in direct competition with every other school district in the state and frankly in North Carolina and Pennsylvania as well for teachers. And if we don't, if we don't get an early jump on that, as a practical example, that's problematic for us. So that stability is important from a planning perspective for us. But again, you know, that isn't dismissing the idea that there are advantages to the, to the other way of doing it because we would come in full bore when we were presenting them in North Carolina to our, to our commissioners down there and say, this is precisely what we need. And then we would have a long and rigorous debate about whether or not we precisely needed those things. So, I mean, I could acknowledge that, but I would tell you, from a practical operational standpoint for the schools, our preference, which is why we concur with the staff recommendation of the city, is to do it as a revenue-sharing formula. And I will tell you, I get calls regularly from my colleagues around the state going, how did you get a revenue-sharing formula? How did that conversation happen? Because they're all in the same boat.
And I understand.
I will add. We develop a needs-based budget when we go through the budget process. We, every department submits a needs-based budget. So we go through that process and then we prioritize those needs, actually to live within the funding that we projected to get, both from city and the state, as well as the federal government. In addition, the budget document has a list of unmet needs. We put it in our budget document every year. So there, there's a list of needs that are unmet. And I think last year was over 40-something million dollars between capital and, capital outlay, not, not construction, capital outlay, technology and operating expenditures. So we, we go through staff a needs-based budget. We trim it back based on a priority, based on the funding that we have. But in addition to that, we do share with the council and the community unmet needs. And we do that every year.
Thank you, Cheryl. That's a really good point. And if I may add two more things. If we adopt a new funding formula, for how many years are we looking to adopt that formula?
I said 2024.
Yeah, our, our recommendation was through June 30, 2024.
2024, okay. And then regarding the Sandbridge TIF, I get some of the same questions that Mr. Moss mentioned. Why are we using Sandbridge, Sandbridge TIF money for our schools? Can that be explained to me?
So, sure. Every year, the Sandbridge TIF declares, on June 30th, there's an ordinance that goes to City Council that's part of the adopted budget. And on June 30th, $8 million is declared surplus out of the Sandbridge TIF. There is a requirement that there be enough funding in the Sandbridge funds to fund a, one beach replenishment as one is, as well as one emergency beach replenishment. As long as that funding is there and available, that's when we make the decision to, excuse me, declare that $8 million surplus. Eight, $4 million goes to the schools, which, Farrell can correct me if I'm wrong, about 3.5 million is used in the CIP and about $500,000 is used in the operating budget. And then the city receives or keeps the remaining $4 million.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Okay, we're going to go Beverly, Rosemary, Jessica Abbott and then Dan.
Oh, sure.
Clarify the TIF.
Well, and I think Jonathan was getting, getting there too. So, you know, we have these two sand replenishments that are always available. Two major funding sources in Sandbridge. One is a special service district. And that special service district, you pay an extra six cent on the real estate tax if you live in Sandbridge. There's an additional 1.5% on the lodging tax. There's some other things in there as well, but those are the two main things. So that is leveraged first. So the TIF, so if you, if you're in a special service district, you are paying more money. If you live in a TIF, you're paying the exact same tax rate as everybody else. The TIF is just a way to capture the increase in assessments that occurred. So that is the part that we're declaring surplus, leveraging the SSD first. And the reason why we split it between the city and schools is the TIF, when it, by its very nature, is being used for a specific purpose, that real estate tax would have gone to city and schools. So we declare that surplus. If we feel like there's not a need for the TIF going forward, then maybe we get rid of the TIF and then just that real estate amount would just go back through the funding formula as we have today. So there is just some nuances between a TIF and SSD. I just wanted to clarify that.
And it's just that there's a lot of confusion, even among the folks at Sandbridge, the SSD and the TIF. The reality is the TIF is what they would be paying for their regular real estate tax anyway. They just get a first shot at being able to take some money out of it if they need it for the sand. But I ask that we have an audit or a review this year of the TIF and the SSD to determine really whether we need to keep the TIF or not. Because when we established it, we thought we were going to be doing sand replenishments every three years. It's kind of turning out that we're doing them every five years. So we may not need that, that money, or it may have accumulated enough so that we, we don't need it. So we are looking at that. But if we were to just say, okay, there's not going to be a Sandbridge TIF anymore, it would just be regular taxes, same thing they do. The SSD is where they pay the additional. And that, that's totally their money. Because it's money they pay just for that purpose. We are looking at both of these this year. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, thank you very much. Beverly and Carolyn, I got you on cue.
While the funding formula does give us the stability we need, I also see the benefit of a needs-based budget. However, and I was one of those people, about one of those teachers that was out on the steps back in the day, Mr. Moss, who was trying to get a needs-based budget, you know, approved by City Council. And to say that there was an argument, instability between the two, the two boards, it was, that's mild. We were, we were not nice to each other back in those days. We felt school board would give a, a needs-based budget and City Council looked at it and said, no, we're going to give you half of that much or whatever, whatever. But that's the way it seemed as a teacher back in the day. This has really been better and has caused us to be able to make predictions on our budget that we, that we need to be able to do as a school system. It does, as much as I like this formula, one of the things I do want to bring up, I'm not trying to open a can of worms, but the worm, the can of worms needs to be opened. It does not address really the capital needs that we really need. And it's been mentioned here, about $3 billion if we look at the whole big picture of what we need for schools down the road. And I think the can of worms needs to be opened and we need to have a dialogue between City Council and school board about how we're going to address our capital improvement needs. So just, I'm just throwing it out there and if anybody else wants to talk, wants to talk to it, let's go.
Okay, Rosemary.
One of the council's top goals is to have well-known schools. And Superintendent School Board, y'all have, all of our schools are accredited. You've done a wonderful job and that is so much that we need to be proud of. Do we have a lot of ways to get, long ways to go with the buildings and teacher salaries? Yes, but there isn't a school division in the country that doesn't have challenges. If it didn't have challenges, you probably wouldn't need us. But as a Realtor, I would just like to say this too, that good schools make good neighborhoods. And if we don't have good schools, people are not going to want to live in our neighborhoods. And it's, we all work together on this. And so it's really, really important. I think Dr. Brickell used to say, people came here for our good schools and not good roads. But it also makes good neighborhoods. And I have been on the council, no, excuse me, I was on the school board when we did not have a funding formula. We've had this formula now for twenty-one years and it has worked really well for us. Prior to that, it was like World War III between the two bodies. And it was not pretty and we were in the paper every week of the fussing and the feuding and the fighting. And really, I just always felt the public deserved better than that, that we should be able to figure things out. And I think figuring things out was coming up with this formula. So sometimes they say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. This is not, this is a, you know, an adjustment, which is, what you're supposed to do every couple of years, is to relook at it, rethink it and adjust it. And I think that's, that's what we're doing here.
Okay, Jessica Abbott.
I don't know if this on, okay, never mind. I think I'll just start with, my family's extremely invested in the schools being a success. Not only because part of my income depends on it, with my husband being a fourth grade teacher, but my son will be in kindergarten next year. And I will be a direct participant in how the schools are conducting themselves in terms of how it affects me as a taxpayer. I don't want to pretend that I'm an expert on that document. I've only read through it a handful of times and feel like, probably like most of us, a little overwhelmed. But I do want to just kind of voice, kind of some guiding thoughts I have on it and, and kind of echo some of the things I'm hearing. I do think that the way we budget is a lot different than what a household budget is. But I will also say that you only can break a dollar up so many ways. And yes, families stretch, but we only stretch so far. And I can tell you personally that I have chosen to go without some things instead of getting other things. And I think the reality is that's how everybody operates, including the city. So yes, there are some similarities. I want to know how we get to a point where instead of saying, let's spend what we collect, but let's just collect what we need. And maybe that is the funding formula. I can see the pros of it. I see that, hey, if I know I have X amount of dollars, we can buy the X amount of things. But I also realize that if, I think I have a little more faith in what the pop, what our community wants, in that if we just submit a bill, I think the public can see the merits of what we're asking to do. So perhaps a needs-based funding is where we should be going. I have, I believe that if we go to the public and say, you know what, these teachers are doing a heck of a job, they deserve this much of a pay increase and we need this much money to reduce class sizes and we need to modernize our schools because this study shows that it really benefits the learning environment. I know that the kids that my husband teaches, all of them go home with food. I know that all of them are on free and reduced lunch. And I know that if their parents had $25, that kid would get a different, an additional opportunity that they don't get now. And so I'm concerned that we are just deciding to say, we're going to just fix the amount at this much and that's what we get is what we get, when we could potentially be saying, maybe the city doesn't get so much, but the school gets more, or maybe the school gets a little less, but we get to address this other critical issue. Because in Matthew, there were kids that were homeless because of flooding. And so all of it is together. And I guess what I'm, overall, I'm trying to say is, I want to know, how do we get to a more holistic budgeting method? Maybe this is the answer. I don't, I don't, I'm not giving an opinion on whether it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, I want a holistic budgeting practice that addresses the most important things first and then we fill in where we can. And that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dan Edwards.
Just to put a couple of things in perspective, in the seventies and eighties, a revenue-sharing formula, if they'd even thought of it, would have been, I'll agree with Mr. Moss on that, would have been a bad idea back then. Because frankly, when you were adding three, four, five thousand students a year or more, and, you know, it was, it was growing, changing times and that, that formula would have had to been updated at least every year. So it really wouldn't have been a planning tool. We, we will be, we will be in a position to going back to cookie cutter, cookie cutter schools. When we get back to the seventies and eighties, when we were building three or four or five brand-new schools every year, because then that, that set of plans will work multiple places. As opposed to maybe one school every other year, which is where we are now. So, yeah, there are efficiencies when you're building a lot of things at once. And wow, wouldn't it be great when we get back to that? Anyway, that's, I just wanted to put a couple of comments into what I thought a little better perspective. Thanks.
Okay, Carolyn.
Thank you. Again, I just got the information yesterday, so there's a lot, you know, 25 pages or whatever to look through. So I'll be looking forward to studying that and having more, more conversation with, with my colleagues. I, I do want to say thank you to Chair Anderson and Mayor Dyer for giving us extra time today because usually we have meetings and right at four o'clock, it's done and we're gone. So I think this conversation is very helpful and good. And so hopefully we'll, we'll take this in the future and be able to have dialogue. And I've got a skin, skin in the game. I just counted up the years. I'll have 39 straight years that I'll have one of my five children in our schools and my granddaughter without a single break. And so I've got, I've got 10, 10 or 11 more years. So, and we all know that, that our schools and the strengths of our schools, it is the top economic driving force of the city. I mean, when our daughter was four years old, we moved from a neighboring city to Virginia Beach. Why? Just basically 100% for the schools because she was going to start kindergarten. We had to buy a more expensive house. We had to move and uproot, move further from both of our jobs, but we did it for the schools. And I think that we all, you know, understand that and know how important that is. I see both sides. I mean, and I'm kind of on the fence because there's so, so much advantage to both sides plus, but there's some disadvantages to both sides. I do think the revenue-sharing formula has made it a lot easier, sometimes maybe too easy for the school board. And I know my colleagues can, can get mad at me for saying this later, but if you look at our last few years of budgeting, it's gone super, super kind of smooth and short and not too many meetings versus, you know, when I first got on the board, even though we had revenue sharing formula, it was a lot more, it seemed like. But, and so there is, there is safety to it, but I still think that I would definitely like to have the conversation with my colleagues about what it really looks like to, to go for a needs-based budget. I, I share the, the concerns as Ms. Anderson with this. You know, it's void CIP and that's a conversation that we are having as a school board all the time now. We have had that conversation for the last, you know, several years. And so I'm troubled by that. Is there any, but for the planning, is there any kind of hybrid solution to this that you can kind of, you know, give us a, a hybrid where you're, you're going to get this to do this, but then maybe later on? Farrell's shaking his head.
I know.
So there's, there's just no way without, I know.
I think the hybrid is what's getting the, the policy, which is if the board needs something beyond the prescriptive formula that the board would have the opportunity to ask. And again, it's revenue-driven, so council still determines revenue, right? I mean, so council can raise or cut taxes. I mean, during the recession, there was a significant tax cut. And so that still determines the revenue and then our formula currently, and then in this proposal, would adjust up or down based on those decisions that council would make about the income needs and then the, the revenue needs of the city. And so, you know, we, we would be constrained to that. And then if there were other needs, which there are, as Farrell mentioned, we mention them every year in the estimate of needs, then, and the board says we need to ask for it, then that's an opportunity to engage in the kind of conversation that the board engaged in prior to, prior to a revenue-sharing formula. And we, we've been in a couple of those since I've been here. We had a, a conversation early on about a compensation need and there was a tax increase relative to that. There was a conversation about the need for money for full-day kindergarten. Council engaged in a debate about that and there was a, a tax increase for that. And then we had a conversation about the need to conclude full-day kindergarten. That didn't result in a tax increase. And so there are opportunities to really have the kind of discussions that I, I feel like are being talked about around the table, even to the point of it being a hybrid, within the constraints of having a revenue-sharing formula. I mean, I think those I mean, I think those conversations can still happen.
Well, yeah, but, but the way it is now, the only flexibility you have to ask for more is basically a tax increase. And some of us don't, don't believe that that is, that is the, the best. But, you know, at any rate, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation. And again, I, I thank everybody for, for, for talking about this. It was very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara.
I think a big part of the problem is that the third party in all of this is not a part of this conversation. And that's the state. And I think we've avoided that whole piece of this. But I really think a lot of our problem is shown on this graph that shows state funding and the gap is getting wider. That's just an operating cost. But they're not giving us any funding for construction. And we used to get a pretty good amount for construction. And, you know, of course, when they sold the lottery to the public, it was, oh, well, all the lottery money is gonna go for schools. And Virginia Beach designated all of our lottery money for school construction. And that's really how we started this whole process of remodeling and updating schools. And it worked great until they decided they weren't gonna give us the lottery money anymore and then got down to a zero. Somehow or other, I think we need to include the General Assembly in our meetings and in our conversations, because they are not performing. I think we're both doing all that we can. The opportu, the opposite, or the, the only way that the city council would be able to come up with additional money for the schools without a tax increase is to cut services that the city provides. So that's not good. But I think we really need to have a, a meeting with our General Assembly delegation and lay it out and show them a map like this and say, how come? And certainly, the lottery money ought to be coming for education. That's, and I don't mean just to supplant there what they would have been given anyway. I mean, that was supposed to be additional money for education. And we need to have that conversation. And I think we need to have it regionally, because a couple of years ago, when we got together with the region and asking for some more state funding, it, it panned out. Because all of the localities are having the same conversation. So I'd suggest that we meet with our state delegation and let them join in the problem of, of meeting these needs, especially this lack of, of funding for construction. Because that's what we had designated was that lottery money, because we had lost a referendum for construction. And we were saying, well, how are we gonna do anything? But then miraculously, the, the lottery money came up and we were able to do it. So I think we ought to go back to them.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, before we go to Sharon, let me just say that I, you know, concur and I think we should meet with the delegation. We used to do that years ago, where the school board, the council, and the delegation did meet, because that's the only way that we're gonna get effective communication and get our needs, you know, definitely on the table. And then, Mr. Lahey, if I'm not mistaken, we, the city also had our road money cut from, I think, thirty-six million to zero from the state? You know, so once again, you know, we're getting squeezed on both ends and I think that's critical. Sharon.
I don't remember raising my hand, but.
Oh, okay. You raised it, but I didn't know what it was. And then, then Guy, I got Guy on to you.
There was some good conversation around the table. And I'd just like to appreciate Mr. Moss bringing a history lesson about the reign of Mr. Brickell. I was in the reign of Mr. Brickell. And Principal Harris was our teacher, our principal. And she was the one that was going down to the, the storage house to get the second-hand books so that we could learn from those books. So I'm glad that somehow and some way, that this formula came up so that we wouldn't just have separate but equal, but we have equality now. So I'm hoping that we will find a way to invest in our students, because I believe in homegrown, Councilman Ross has said over there that if you invest in your students, they will come back. And I'm finding that when you have good education, economic businesses gravitate to that as well. I'm seeing it a lot in a lot of big cities. I had the opportunity to see that over the past weekend in the Harlem Children's Zone, how economics now building up because of education. And I think it, it would be who us, if we did not, I look at it not a risk, but an investment in our children. They're looking for us to do that for them. They're looking for us to sit down and act like adults to get this done, because all they're asking for is to give them a quality education. And during that time with Mr. Brickell, yeah, there was some sister hustle ones, but they had to fight for that on the other side of the rail. It was a little hard, it was a little tough. And we found it most successful when we begin to invest in ourselves, because we knew that education would be the greatest equalizer that would make our children better. And I'm hoping that we will find a way in this generation, in this time, to invest in our children and make sure that they do well and be, and do quality work in this city. Thank you.
Sharon, I'm glad I thought I saw you raise your hand. Guy?
I too am glad that you thought. I'd just like to thank everyone that's contributed to this. As a new, newer member of council, it's very helpful to have some of the history of this in making these decisions. And I, I find it very useful. I, I also endorse Councilwoman Henley's proposal. I think this, this is the time for a regional approach. I think we have, have an opportunity to work with our sister cities in seeing if we can't get the state to take a fairer share of their proportion. I'd like to return to the formula itself, though. I, I wonder whether, what the metrics are, if any, by which we judge how well our schools are doing on council. I'm not aware of them. I'm certainly aware of the reports of the many accolades that our schools received, including the number of schools that a hundred percent accredited and, and other awards. I'm also aware of awards the city receives for its various parks and recreation and Best City to Do Business and the like. But I'm somewhat skeptical of some of those awards, just knowing enough about awards in my own profession that they're not always as reliable. And I wondered, do we make any investment in determining whether this is the right formula? Because I understand that this is simply a re-engineering of the formula we've always had. There has been no analysis that I can see of whether the formula is, produces the right amount, only that it produces a predictable amount. And I am concerned about the basic issue of, is the amount right? If we are going to be drawn into a formula, continuing the formula because of the many benefits, which I need not repeat, they were well-stated here, I'd like a little more assurance in some fashion, or at least it would make me comfortable, and maybe I am doomed to be uncomfortable, but I'd like a little more assurance that the metrics for measuring the performance of our school system are something that we all agree are reasonable, up-to-date, educationally sound, fiscally sound, and the like. And I'm just asking that question generally about, do, do school boards and city councils in Virginia or elsewhere do that? Is that possible? Is it, how much investment of time, money does it take? But it would certainly make me more comfortable if I am bound to the formula. I, I like the needs-based philosophically, but I certainly can see in the getting the job done, act like adults, maybe we have to use a formula to get the job done. We'll see what the votes, how the votes come out on that in any event. But, and I, I'd like to know more about that at some point. Not necessarily today, but I'd just like, I think, and maybe other folks would as well. This formula's been in place and we say it's been successful, but we're measuring success, I think, by the fact that the two bo, two bodies have not been had as contentious and experienced with it. I don't think that necessarily means it's the right formula.
I'd just like to say something just to that real quick. Because there is a possibility we could give city council two budgets. One within the formula and one with a needs-based. And that's very easy for us to do, because we already, as Cheryl said, we already show in our budget things that we cannot meet, unmet needs. We already show it and we show it to the public as well. We actually show it to you all. But, you know, if you want to see a needs-based budget with everything that we feel that we need in there, including a decent raise for our teachers, I, I don't see any problem with us showing you both ways.
I see the unmet.
Yeah, sure.
I see the unmet needs as one issue, but another one is the prioritization within the met needs.
If you will, as to, and so that we can get a better idea of how they match up with our budget, because we have the same issue. We have unmet needs as well. We have, and we have, but we have even bigger questions about the priorities among needs that we're actually funding, I think.
Okay, great. Aaron?
This has been great. I think we, we should get together more often tonight to really build on our relationships and how we, we partner about moving Virginia Beach forward. But I just wanted to take this time really, really quick and really acknowledge the work Dr. Spence is doing. I spend quite a lot of time in our schools at all levels. And I'm sure you, you all have heard, from elementary school to middle school to high school. In fact, if you are available this Friday, I will be the grand marshal for First Colonia's homecoming this week. That's on Friday. Hopefully, we win that game in my alma mater. But again, I, I take my hat off for the, for the great work that Dr. Spence, what you're doing for, for our schools, helping our schools be one-hundred percent accredited. But one of the most things I think I'm, I'm really impressed by is, is your vision to cast this wide net to capture all of our students within Virginia Beach. And, and all of our students, particularly in areas where in the past has felt left out and the city and school board have not necessarily focused on those areas and met those needs. So I, I really do appreciate your vision for, for our city. Amidst all the administrative strife, you still are very, very heavily involved in the community. I've seen you out there myself participating. And, and I thank you. I think we're very, very fortunate to have you amidst all the, the schools within our country who are actively seeking superintendents and teachers. I mean, it is a real competition out there to bring in the best talent. And we're, I think we're fortunate enough to have you here. So my hat's off to you as well for all the great work that you continue to do for our city. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? John?
From macro level, the common enemy to all of our resource challenges is slow economic growth. I mean, its GDP growth is very slow. The Congressional Budget Office says we shouldn't be seeing more than about two to 2.3% GDP growth throughout the ten-year period. And by 2029, there will be no discretionary income in the federal budget. It will all be consumed by entitlements and we'll be borrowing one-hundred percent for all non-discretionary spending. These are real, real fiscal trend lines that we face. So anyone who's thinking the federal government's gonna be there to help us, they're looking at the wrong place. I know the state isn't here, but everyone knows the nine-hundred-pound gorilla in the state's budget is Medicaid. That is the big bulk, dealing with the most needy people of our population. And then after that, it's schools and it's prisons. So when we're talking to our General Assembly members about more money, the only way there's gonna be more money from the state is we're all looking at that same household budget. It's, we're the only source, households and businesses. Because you're gonna find only but so much efficiency in any budget, maybe five percent, but you're not gonna find lots. So all the stuff that we talk around here, the ambitions that we have, only will come with new revenues or it just won't happen. Now, that's not a happy message to tell people, but that gets back to Jessica's point about what bills do we want to give the public and tell them that we can make a case that it's worth making that investment? And what sacrifices have we made internally? Meaning, what lower priority stuffs did we call out before we asked them to pay? What did we put on the table? So I do think that when we're looking at this realistically, you know, the only place this revenue is gonna principally come from, for the most part, is not gonna come from the state that we wish it would. I just don't see that really happening in any big way. And if it is, I hope it's for flooding, because that's the biggest bill we have and our most challenged. And if we can't protect our fifty-six billion dollars with the real estate, everything else doesn't really matter. So there is a sense of priority there, but it's gonna be us. And so Jessica's right, it's gonna have to be going to the public and saying, these are wor, these investments are worth making sacrifice for. And, and everything else is just rudder. Because you look at our five-year forecast that we get every year in November, what does it show? That the revenue line is growing slower than the expense line. And that's been true since I've been back on council in 2011. Sometimes we've closed it by fees, sometimes we've closed it by tax increases. Other times, we've done it by redirecting existing revenues and as Guy suggested, making priority choices. But the choices aren't getting easier on that revenue curve looking out. And I'm sure when we get our five-year forecast in November, it isn't gonna look radically different than the one we got last November. And it's gonna show the expense line is growing faster than revenue and how do you plan to close it? So I, I do think there is a realism. And if kids, what we think, and they are the most, we're not investing, well, then what are we going to invest less in over time on the city's side to make those revenues available? Or what are we gonna go out there and jointly ask the public, jointly, and hopefully you now ask the public to pay for and make the narrative case? That is the real challenge that I see as I hear all the words. The funding formula isn't gonna solve the gap between what we think we should do and what we are able to do. And that's the conversation, I think, that's much more important.
Thank you. Jessica and then Aaron.
I, I didn't have any, oh, I'm sorry. I was, I forgot there's another Jessica. There is. There's always gonna be two Jessicas in the room. Just wanted to thank, thank you all for the presentation. It's helpful to kind of have it laid out. And I know that we, everybody just got it recently, so we will need some more time to digest it. And without having a, a true preference for which, which way to handle it is better, whether it's revenue sharing or the needs-based budget, I would hope that we will be presented with basically some worst-case and best-case scenarios from each to be able to really look at and consider how different, different economic things that could happen could affect what we're really looking at here. But one of the things that I want us to keep in mind, they started off the presentation by saying that they did some environmental scanning and looked at revenue sharing in other cities locally that have it, including Norfolk and Chesapeake. And when I think about the competition that we have right now for us, Virginia Beach getting the high-quality and diverse staff that we're looking for in teachers and bus drivers, I think it's important to just keep in mind that if we are going to choose a different system, that our bigger competition regionally may have the ability to start recruiting before us. And just keeping in mind how that may affect our ability to recruit the teachers and staff that we're hoping to get. So I just want us to be mindful of what's going on in the region when we talk about how things were twenty, twenty-five, thirty years ago. If they didn't have revenue-sharing formulas in place, then at the same time that we didn't, then we were more on even ground as far as the competition and to get that staff and to have those budgets in place earlier. If one of us is gonna have it and one of us is not, then we just want to be mindful of what effects that might have with our recruiting.
Thank you. And Aaron, we're gonna get ready to close out, but go right ahead.
Just to mention, I think what John said, the, the state of the country and our, and our, and our region economy has had slow economic growth. But it's, it's also important to note that when we talk about Medicaid and, and the state fundings as a source of revenue, that the state, as well as the federal level, that the top one percent gained over twenty-one trillion dollars in wealth since nineteen eighty-nine. And so while the bottom half has lost over nine-hundred billion. And all those things have an effect downstream, which affects us locally. So when we talk about funding streams, of course, I don't think we can count on the state, but also understand that this is predicated or, or as a result.